Please take your seats. Welcome to tonight's meeting. We're gonna have the invocation by Pastor Roger Allen from Jonesboro First Baptist Church. If you would, please rise and be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you join me as we pray? Most gracious heavenly Father, dear God, Lord, we thank you, Lord, for the day. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for the sunshine, the beautiful weather outside that we enjoy today. Father, most of all, we thank you, Lord, for a place that we can call the land of the free and home of the brave. For the opportunity, dear Father, Lord, to live in a country, Lord, where we can assemble like this, dear Father, Lord, and look at the issues of the day, Lord, and not be worried, Lord, about outside attacks and all the other kinda weird stuff that's going on in our world today, dear Father. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for those leaders, Lord, that you've assembled on this panel, dear Father, Lord, to lead this county. Lord, I pray, Lord, just a special blessing on them, dear Father, Lord, as they lead and guide the decisions, Lord, that will make Clayton County, Lord, a great place to live. And, Lord, right now during this time, Lord, we just pray, Lord, for your blessing on this meeting, Lord, that you will just block out, Lord, thoughts, Lord, from the outside, dear Father, Lord, and allow us just to focus, Lord, on why you've got us here this evening, Lord, and that's for the betterment of Clayton County. We ask this, dear Father, in your most precious holy name, Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Will you join me as we do the pledge?
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening to everyone. Prior to the adoption of the agenda, I would ask the board if any members would like to offer any amendments.
Yes. Commissioner Rooks, I move to remove Resolution 215-31 from consideration this evening.
I'll second that.
Probably move to second. Any questions on it? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Madam Clerk, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hold items number 20 and 22, the appointments to the Development Authority and Urban Redevelopment Agency of Clayton County.
Want a clarification, you're holding both of them or just the one?
They're both for, both of them, they're both for chairman.
So you wanna hold both of them?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm sorry, which ones were those chairman?
You said 20 and 22, right?
20 and 22.
20 and 22, thank you.
Did I say 21? I'm sorry. 20 and 22.
Is there a second on that?
I second, Mr. Chair.
Probably move to second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you.
With the amendments to remove Resolution 215-31, as well as items number 20 and 22 that are listed on page four, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda with the noted corrections.
Second.
Probably move to second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
We will now have public comment. Mr. Chairman, it appears that we do have two individuals listed for public comment.
Madam Clerk.
Citizens.
Well, we just approved the minutes.
We approve the agenda.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, approval of the minutes, I'm sorry.
It's a motion to approve the minutes.
We approve the minutes from January 20th, 2015.
Oh, second, it probably moved to second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. All right, first speaker, Dr. Henry Anderson.
Good evening all. In the Friday, December 28th, 2012 Clayton News Daily newspaper article entitled "BOCs, Turner and Rooks Pledge Transparency in Government." Commissioner Rooks, you said in the article that anything that makes the citizens of District 3, as you know, I live in your district and the county feel like they're connected, their voices matter, and they understood what's going on in government, that's what you want. Also Chairman Turner, you said that in leaving this era of double talk, empty rhetoric, and grand promises that cannot be kept, I pledge to speak to you with candor, clarity, and frank honesty concerning the issues we face. You also pledge transparency and a more community-oriented attitude in the county government. In addition to televising the commission meetings, which is a great thing for the good citizens of Clayton County, you both have continued to take the lead in greater transparency of county government along with your fellow commissioners by delivering, in my opinion, and oh how have you delivered, with the release starting at the beginning of last year in 2014, Board of Commissioner meeting minutes, and continuing at this present time, the release of the Financial Department supporting documentation, the Human Resources documentation, information that I really didn't discover till I went on the internet in October when I couldn't make the meetings and look at the agenda. This is valuable information. It shows in great comprehensive detail the information that Chief Financial Officer Ms. Ramona Thurman and the Director of Human Resources, Mr. Renee Bright, present to all of you for commission approval. This powerful information because it shows paperwork and documentation to the departments, such as the Department of Transportation, Department of Parks and Recreation, Department of Community Development, Clayton County Police Department, and other departments. When they submit their requests for splash monies, amendments in their budgets, and other financial requests for approval to use, the money is available to them. By releasing this information personally, well, releasing this information to the great citizens of Clayton County, you have personally made more powerful my public commenting and using this as a valuable source because it shows great detailed information. In closing, this is why I'm coming before all of you and giving all of you a heartfelt thank you, because this is powerful information. It puts in great detail that the monies that are spent, because I have gone through this, and in future meetings, there are some concerns that I have in terms of, are we getting value for our money from what we spend, because this is detailed factual information which you have released to the citizens. In closing, this is why I'm coming before you and giving all of you a heartfelt thank you, and especially to you Commissioner Rooks and to you Chairman Turner, for fulfilling your campaign promises and pledges and making sure that Clayton County is more of an open and transparent government. In the area of governmental openness and transparency with the release of this powerful factual information documentation with the agenda at each commission meeting, this alone earns all of you my personal highest commission evaluation rating of a 10-plus. Congratulations and keep the Clayton County Governmental Finance and Human Resources Department supporting documentation information coming in each agenda report to the good citizens of Clayton County for those of us who read it and appreciate it. Thank you again.
Thank you, Doctor.
Didn't even show me get a plus plus.
Judy Simon. Ms. Judy Simon, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Judy Simon, and I'm here representing Fixed Georgia Pets, which is a nonprofit spay-neuter organization. Clayton County is very fortunate to have their campaign totally going towards your county. They're going to spend probably tens of thousands of dollars here, and I thought everything was going really well, and I was monitoring the calls, and everything was going beautifully until Sheriff Victor Hill, is he here tonight? Wanted to thank him, he sent out some huge blast. I got over 100 calls within a two-hour period, and that scares me to death, because I have barely had time to get phone numbers and names, let alone schedule them and find out what they have, because most of them have multiple pets. So I wanted to let the commissioners know that there is a huge need in Clayton County for spay and neuter, for safety of your constituents, for, you know, dogs running at large. So I wanted to thank the sheriff's office, I wanted to thank the police department, I wanted to thank Captain Jackson and his animal control unit, I wanted to thank Paige and the Clayton County Humane Society, and I wanted to thank my dear friend and comrade in arms Claudia for helping me, without her I could not do this, because she is a strong advocate for Clayton County animals. And gee, if we run out of money, do you think you guys could kind of match our funds through your general fund? Anyway, I'm proud to be working in Clayton County and answering the need, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I have a question, just to clarify, the spay and neuter offerings, is that free?
Yes.
Okay.
What we're trying to do is we're trying to get copays from each client to help as much as we can, to spread the money as far as we can, and to cover the costs of the rabies vaccination, which is, you know, the legal requirement. But other than that, yeah, they can afford it. And I hear in their voices, even from the telephone messages, these people want to do it. They're borrowing money to adopt animals. I don't get it, but they love animals, so they're willing to adopt money, and then, you know, they need help. I mean, these are good people, they're not rich, they're financially needy, and they just need our help. It's, I'm scared, like I said, I'm scared to death, but I'm so excited.
And I believe y'all have been working with the police department on the logistics of making that happen.
Yes, we've been working with the police department, the sheriff's department, animal control, they've all been very eager to help, and we welcome their support.
We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will now have proclamations. It's Chief Murkison and Beth Derrmeyer, along with any other representatives here for the Severe Weather Awareness Week. If you would, please come forward, and I would ask the commissioners to please rise from their respective seats at the table and join them for the presentation. And the proclamation reads thusly, "Each year, whereas each year Clayton County citizens face the threat of severe weather events such as lightning, thunderstorms, floods, flash floods, hailstorms, tornadoes, and hurricanes, all potentially dangerous to life, health, and property. And, whereas, in 2014, severe weather events in Georgia included two snow and ice storms, 24 tornadoes, and 40 flooding events that caused nearly $8 million in damage. And, whereas, severe weather events in Georgia have killed at least 361 people since 1978, including one in 2014, injured countless others, and caused substantial property damage in Georgia. And, whereas, it is essential that effective public education programs concerning severe weather systems and preparedness continue for the benefit of all. Clayton County citizens are encouraged to have multiple ways to receive weather alerts, including monitoring local media, NOAA Weather Radio, ReadyGeorgia Smartphone App, and Clayton County's ReadyClayton.com website. And, whereas, Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services, Georgia Emergency Management Agency, National Weather Service, Clayton County Police, Clayton County Sheriff's Office, Clayton County Health Department, Clayton County Board of Education, Clayton County Library System, Red Cross, Cities of Jonesboro, Morrow, Lake City, Lovejoy, and Riverdale, Clayton News Daily, and Clayton Amateur Radio Emergency Services are committed to continuing efforts to inform citizens on safety and severe weather preparedness procedures, so they may better protect themselves, their families, neighbors, and their communities. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of February 2nd through the 6th, 2015, as Severe Weather Awareness Week in Clayton County, Georgia. I encourage all our citizens to become more aware of severe weather safety measures and to participate in the various awareness programs scheduled during the week. February 2nd, Family Preparedness Day; February 3rd, Thunderstorm Safety; February 4th, Tornado Safety Statewide Drill; February 5th, Lightning Safety; February 6th, Flooding Alternate Statewide Drill. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the Seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this third day of February and the year 2015. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman." We will now have a proclamation recognizing the Art Club at Hawthorne Elementary, well, Ms. Kristy Housley, and the Art Club Director, and the Art Club students, as well as any other representatives from Hawthorne Elementary, if you all would please come forward at this time. And the proclamation reads thusly, "Whereas Hawthorne Elementary School and the Fine Arts Department were chosen to paint a lasting and memorable mural on a signature wall located at the Lovejoy Soccer Complex. And, whereas, the Art Club at Hawthorne Elementary is led by Kristy Housley and includes art students Melanie Espinzo, Angel Soto, Leslie Boca Nenaro, Erin Williams, Lily Bustamante, Edwin Vivaldo, Morgan Williamson, Christina Yanaz, Anthony Griffin, Zara Gates, Jamal Walker, Nisha Ashbourne, Braylon Thomas, George Ventura, Michaela McLaren, Jacala Wells, and Dariana James. And, whereas, the students worked extremely hard to complete the mural, which can best be described as youthful soccer players enjoying the game, and sportsmanship of uniting as one team together. And whereas Hawthorne Elementary School is located close to the Lovejoy Soccer Complex and allows the art students to view their work continuously and as often as they like. And, whereas, the project was completed in just two afternoons and one full day on a Saturday. The initial vision of a soccer theme with children exhibiting several different soccer moves was the main focal point for the art students. They remained on track and enjoyed every minute of their experience. And, whereas, the soccer mural is a beautiful display of the raw talent and partnership of the art students at Hawthorne Elementary School. Their commitment to their artwork and giving back to their local soccer complex is recognized and praised all members in the community. And, whereas, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognizes the hard work and talent displayed by the Art Club students at Hawthorne Elementary School. Now, therefore, I, Shayna M. Rooks, Commissioner, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize the remarkable and talented work of the Art Club students at Hawthorne Elementary School, and encourage all citizens to join me in congratulating these artists for their exceptional work and painting of the mural at the Lovejoy Soccer Complex. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the Seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this third day of February and the year 2015. Shayna M. Rooks, Commissioner."
This is our intent to have photos of their artwork here for you guys this evening, so we'll post those online, but please go by and see what they've done, it's fantastic. I can only draw six figures, so they have far as to pass anything that I can do, but congratulations, kids.
And I also would like to throw out there, thank the parents for bringing them here tonight and for you being there with us. Thank you so much.
The board will now consider requests of Deborah Brewer, Director of Central Services.
Give it just a second, Ms. Brewer. Okay, you may proceed, thank you.
Good evening, Central Services has one request to sell surplus county items, Section 229 of the Clayton County Code of Ordinance and sale of property sets forth the conditions under which property may be disposed of. Property belonging to Clayton County shall not be sold, transferred, or conveyed without due consideration from the Board of Commissioners for value received for the said sale, transfer, or conveyance. Central Services would like to obtain the necessary approval from the Board of Commissioners to dispose of the following county assets listed by lot number from 445 through 465, utilizing the contract with GovDeals.
Is there a motion?
I move that we accept the request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moving second, any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you.
The board will now consider requests of Ramona Thurman Bivins, Chief Financial Officer.
Ms. Bivins, please take them all at once unless the commissioner would like to take one separately.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Hearing none, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have six items for your consideration this evening. The first is Budget Amendment 2-17 for the police department. It's to amend the budget in the amount of $35,000 to replace one police vehicle where repair cost exceeds the value of the vehicle. Budget Amendment 2-18 is for the library. The request is to amend the budget in the amount of $24,800 to replace a van used by the library that was damaged beyond repair in an accident. Budget Amendment 4-91 is for 2015 bond funds. This is to amend the budget in the amount of $144,000 for funding to replace an ambulance in the current fleet that is a total loss.
I do have a question.
Okay, let her finish, and then we'll go back, come back to you.
The next item is a request for a refund in the amount of $72 to Ms. Towana Scandrit doing business at Sensible Decorers in Stockbridge, Georgia, for the purpose of refunding the business license fees paid by Ms. Scandrit to the Community Development Department. The building chosen to operate the business from, that she chose to operate the business from did not pass inspections, therefore the business was not opened. We have another request for refund in the amount of $50 to Cassandra Slaton of Monroe, Georgia. This is to refund permit fees paid for an electrical reconnect permit for the property located at 382 Riverbrook Trail in Riverdale, Georgia. The property is located within the city limits of Riverdale and therefore is not in the Clayton County's permitting district. The final item is a request for a refund in the amount of $2,700 to Jorge Maciel doing business at La Casa Mexican Restaurant in Jonesboro, Georgia, for the purpose of refunding the alcohol license fees paid by Mr. Maciel to the Community Development Department. The license was not approved due to non-recommendation by the Clayton County Police Department.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'm sure I left.
Uh, second, it probably moved to second, any questions at this time?
Yes. I have a question regarding the replacement of vehicles from repair from an accident and all. Do we have insurance? At all, how does that work? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
The board will now hear and consider requests of Kristy Barnes, Chief Staff Attorney.
Please take them all together unless the commissioner desires to take one separately.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, the-
Hearing none, proceed.
Sorry. The first ordinance, number 2015-29, is for first read only, and it is an ordinance adopted under the Home Rule Powers granted to Clayton County pursuant to Article 9, Section 2, Paragraph 1 of the Constitution of the State of Georgia of 1983, amending the Clayton County Code of Ordinances, specifically relevant sections of the Clayton County, Clayton County, Georgia Public Employee Retirement System to define the term leased employee as such term is used by the plan, to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions, and to provide an effective date of this ordinance. Resolution number 2015-30 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a license agreement to allow Real Help Network Incorporated to sponsor and host a soup tasting competition at the South Clayton Recreation Center, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes. This event will be February the 21st, 2015, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The Department of Parks and Recreation is requesting approval by this board of the department's facility use at a cost of $250, which is half off the total cost of $500, as this is a 501(c)(3) organization. Resolution number 2015-32 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a settlement agreement settling all claims set forth in the matters involving Lorene King and Jonathan King, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the settlement agreement, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes. agreement, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash thirty-three is a resolution authorizing the Clayton County Department of Senior Services on behalf of Clayton County to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Atlanta Regional Commission, providing for the terms and conditions pertaining to the retired and senior volunteer program, to authorize the Chairman or the Director of Senior Services as is designee to execute the MOU, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash thirty-four is a resolution to amend the Clayton County Planning Year two thousand twelve and Planning Year two thousand thirteen annual action plans to allow for the recapture and reuse of funding for projects supported by the Community Development Block Grant and Emergency Solutions Grant Programs, to authorize the Chairman to execute any documents, any necessary documents, and otherwise to perform any acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect appropriate revenue sources and expenses, all as may be required, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash thirty-five is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Train U.S. Incorporated, providing for the terms and conditions under which a study will be conducted under Train's PACT Program evaluating lighting at five athletic fields, to authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. These services will be provided at no cost to the county. And Resolution twenty fifteen dash thirty-six is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into lease agreements with Georgia Power Company for the provision of lighting services and equipment, to authorize the Chairman to execute the agreements and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. These are for properties located at thirty-one sixty-one Anvil Block Road in Ellenwood and seventy, seventy-eight forty, Highway eighty-five in Riverdale, Georgia, and the Georgia Power will be providing lighting equipment and services in the parking lot area of those locations.
Is there a motion?
I move that we accept those resolutions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moving, second, are there any questions on any of the items?
I just have a question. Uh, Mr. Order, what exactly is your grant from A R C. gonna do? Tell me just more specifically, for the seniors.
The grant provides volunteer opportunities for seniors. They can come and talk to the community about services that we provide in senior service, specifically, or R S V P. also provides training for them on Medicaid, so they can go out into the community and talk to seniors about Medicaid.
Okay. Okay. So what, just like a stipend for gas and stuff like that?
Yes, they are reimbursed up to forty dollars for gas for mileage.
Got you, okay. And also, if they were doing some volunteer work, a senior, if a senior was gonna do some volunteer work away from somewhere else, it would provide some type of stipend or travel expense for them to do it?
Yes, it's mileage to and from the site where they're doing the volunteer work.
Okay. Thank you.
Strictly for mileage.
Strictly for mileage.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I need an executive session for litigation and personnel.
Item number eighteen is an appointment to the Library Board to fill the unexpired term of Janelle Bridges, who has resigned. This term ends on June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations?
I would like to nominate Charlton Bivens. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Probably moving, second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Item number nineteen is an appointment to the Hospital Authority Board to fill the unexpired term of Cephas Jackson, who has resigned. This term expires on October thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations? Hearing none, we'll move to item number twenty-one, and this is the appointment to the Development Authority Board slash Redevelopment Authority Board to fill the expiring term of Kalanis Johnson. The term is for four years, expiring on March first, two thousand nineteen. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations?
I move to reappoint Kalanis Johnson to both boards.
I move to reappoint Kalanis Johnson to both boards. It was second by Commissioner.
All right, probably moving, second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, if there is no further business to discuss, we can have a motion to go into executive accession for litigation and personnel.
Motion to go into executive session.
I move that we go into executive session.
Uh, second, probably moving, second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you. Thank everyone for being here.